Here.
President Jones?
Here. Thank you. I need a motion to approve the minutes from the regular meeting, August 7, 2019, and the special meeting, August 7, 2019.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Minutes are approved as presented. Mrs. Bolton, please present the August 1, 2019 Student Achievement Meeting Report.
Thank you. Once again, we had a very productive meeting. I want to thank the administration and the community members that come and help us talk about stuff that's important. It started with the need to review the air tests as they become available. Mr. Leach said that he will update SAC about the additional information regarding air tests at the September 12 meeting. We also heard about the new state requirements regarding graduation, which I think are very important for us. It's like there'll be three different kind of ways where the four graduating classes that are currently in the high schools have three different paths, I think, as he said to get there, and different grades can use different methods. So we need to keep aware of that. And then also, he's, we're trying to figure out a way to look at dropout rates, what those might be, or how you determine that in such a mobile district. We had a presentation on the exciting thing that we're doing in this year, which is a week of PD, professional development, to see how that works. It's something we've not done before, and there's lots of PD, both internal and external professional development. Ms. Worley reported again, just as an update of our great attendance initiative. Also, Mr. McDole reported as well regarding the recruitment. And I know that it's going to be, we also received some information in our packets, and I know there'll be a bigger report than that for the whole board. We were introduced to several really wonderful young professional people who have developed a high achievers, AIM-HI group, that really deals with social emotional learning, as well as what to do about bullying, and they're kind of homegrown CPS people, both as previous students and also as professionals within our district. And Assistant Superintendent Bunty is going to be meeting with them to see where they might fit, and we had to make everyone aware of what the budget timeline was and is, and I think she'll be talking with them about how we can continue to use them. They're already in several of our schools and have provided great service. Member Morosky presented back to us from an offshoot of full-board meeting his interests in finding a way to have CPS somehow assume the program of Imagination Library, and I know we can be talking about that. And I believe the administration's having a meeting about that this week, so I don't know that we need to discuss it here tonight, but maybe after the administration comes back with that information. And it does center around the idea of proper public purpose. Said that right. And then we also have appreciated Ms. Worley's efforts in keeping us abreast of where we are in the transition and enhancement regarding community learning centers, and we've had some departure of lead agencies. We've had a lot of turnovers regarding resource coordinators, and so I know they're in the midst of those transitions. And I know one of the issues, too, is that there are some neighborhoods and communities and community groups that are interested in assuming, and maybe not this year, but in the coming years, being the lead agency for their particular neighborhood school, which would be the ultimate, I think. But there's great transition there. We had a further discussion of the safety subcommittee that we mentioned to you the last time we met as a board, and what those dates look like, and some of the things to be thinking about as we revise our safe routes to school. What was brought to our attention, too, is that the previous safe routes to school was the only one that was district-wide in the state, and it was passed in 2013. But looking back at that voluminous report, even though we have to update it, and you can't, according to ODE, Mr. Morosky or Mr. Davis can correct me, normally they, and I think Mr. Hoyne as well, we only can kind of submit four schools at a time, or something like that. It's a partial kind of effort. But if we look at the existing safe routes to school, there are some things that are still chronically wrong with needs to be improved that didn't get improved. So I mean, at least we have a baseline to begin to look by all of our 60-some schools. I briefed the committee on the need for the movement in the state among urbans, all of the urbans, not just the grade eight, to take to task the, again, report card reform. And the administration's asked us to review our work plan and make some adjustments, and we did a little bit of that and got back to them as well. New business, Mr. Morosky brought to us, to our attention again, the Transportation and Youth Safety Pedestrian Subcommittee, or ADHOC, and we, I think that's moving ahead with us being on it. And then we had the continuing discussion regarding the Taft Alumni Foundation, not alumni, Taft Foundation, the Taft High School Foundation, still concerned about not only having pavers but tiles on the wall. And that went back to the administration. And then we do have two new dates, trying to accommodate the administration, because our third Thursday is problematic because there are principal meetings. We will be meeting in September, the second Thursday, and in October, the first Thursday. But November and December will remain as scheduled, and the Finance Committee remains as scheduled throughout the rest of the year. I submit and appreciate all the work everybody does in these committees.
Thank you. It's been motion, first of all, do board members have any questions or comments about the report? Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes are approved as presented. Thank you. Superintendent Mitchell, would you please introduce our first presentation?
Gladly. I am delighted to present a presentation this evening called CPS Strong. The district may be really excited and happy to know that when Dr. Pinto launched his three-year direction, he specifically called out Cincinnati Public Schools as a major priority under CPS Strong. And so I'm excited and delighted to have Dr. Bluzette Marshall, who is the Vice President of Equity and Inclusion and Community Impact. And if memory serves me right, Dr. Marshall is a product, a graduate of Cincinnati Public Schools, Wanted Hills High School.
Yay!
And she proudly wears her shirt. I am going to introduce Kayla Rickles, Rida Rickles, who is our College Manager for the district, so welcome, everyone.
Well, great, and thank you for having us. As we look at growing our college-bound rate in the district, we really need to take a look at our data, where it lives right now, and over half of our college-bound students choose a UC campus. And so as we think of CPS challenging our college partners to have mutual accountability to our students, we have a couple shining stars in our college partnerships, one of which is the University of Cincinnati. And so as we develop Destination Cincinnati, we are really lucky to know that the University of Cincinnati is already committed to our students through a development and an initiative called CPS Strong. And so tonight, Dr. Bluzette Marshall, the Vice President of Equity, Inclusion, and Community, will be sharing a really exciting update of the work that's been going on for the past 18 months, committing to Cincinnati Public Students that choose to go to the University of Cincinnati. So I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Marshall.
Thank you so much, Kayla. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Superintendent Mitchell, thank you for having us. Board members, thank you so much. I'm joined by two colleagues, Kathy Maynard, who is our Associate Dean in our College of Education, Criminal Justice, Human Services, and Information Technology, as well as Josie Evans Phillips, who is serving as our Director of Diversity within our College of Education, Criminal Justice, Human Services, and Information Technology. And so today, we're here and we're excited to talk with you about CPS Strong. As you may know, about 18 months ago, President Pinto and my colleagues announced our new strategic direction for the university, which is really designed to lead other public, public urban universities into a new era of innovation and impact. And within that particular strategic direction, we have a platform. We have three platforms. The first is academic excellence. The second is looking at urban impact, and the third is our innovation agenda. And if you look closely at the urban impact piece, you will see a call-out, as Superintendent Mitchell mentioned, of CPS Strong. And so with CPS Strong, we thought that as we were developing our direction for the institution, where would we like to be in 10 years? We wanted to think about what are new metrics? Everyone talks about recruitment and retention. Everyone talks about where their placement is going. And so as we thought about the origin of the university, of being the city's university for higher education, really being created and designed to support our public school students, we knew that we had to make sure that not only were we getting back to our roots, but that we were also planning ahead to really be able to support our students, hence CPS Strong, and really making sure that the students who come to UC not only come, but that they graduate, and they graduate strong. And so as we're doing that, we wanted to look at what our vision for CPS Strong is. And really, if you think about CPS Strong, we're thinking about students today, but leaders tomorrow. And so our vision really is to make sure that our students graduate from the university, but they become the change agents and the leaders for our community, and also for our university, and subsequently changing the world. If we look at the mission of the university, the mission is really about four primary aspects. It's really to engage not only the university community and the CPS community, but our broader community, into the support of the readiness for students coming to college, also creating access points and opportunities for students going to college, as well as fostering success for all of our CPS students who are within our UC walls. But we have to do that by making sure that we are aligning and co-creating and co-designing programs and experiences really to support our students throughout their matriculation. And ultimately, we want to make sure that this is a system-wide approach, and we want to make sure ultimately that we're keeping our students at the center. It's easy for us to do things that are just easy because we want to do it, but we really have to take the particular needs and interest of our students into account and really create that experience that will really help unleash their potential and help them to become the best versions of themselves. And so as we look at our CPS Strong, we have two primary goals. The first goal really is to support our CPS UC students to graduate successfully from UC. And underpinning that are three primary areas. We want to make sure that we are increasing our graduation rates and that we're closing our graduation gaps. We want to remediate all gaps, either by first-generation status, by race and ethnicity, by gender, things of that nature. And also, we want to make sure that we're increasing career-based outcomes for our students. Part of our strategic direction has a focus called Bearcat Promise. And within that Bearcat Promise, the goal is for every student to be able to walk across our stage at graduation, not only with a degree in hand, but a plan for the future. And so certainly with our CPS students, we want to make sure that when they graduate from the university, that they're graduating strong students, but also they already have their career mapped out for at least the next two years, if not beyond. And then the third aspect really is to foster greater alumni engagement of our CPS UC alumni. And so we've been meeting to talk about, you know, who are our UC CPS graduates? How are they engaged currently as volunteers on campus? Are they contributing back to campus financially? What programs are they supporting? And might they be interested in supporting our CPS initiatives directly? The second goal is really being able to support our CPS students through the readiness and access phases for the university. And two primary areas underpin that. The first is increasing the college readiness of our CPS students who are involved in our partnership programs already. We want to make sure that students know everything that it takes to be able to be strong applicants and to be admitted and enrolled into the University of Cincinnati. And then secondly, we want to make sure that we're increasing what we're calling good-fit college access for CPS students. Oftentimes, we've seen where students get admitted to college and they realize, you know what, this really just isn't the major for me. This may not even be the college for me. My parents just wanted me to go. I don't even want to be here. So we really want to take the time to get to know our students, get to know what their needs, their heart's desires, and their interests are, so that we can create the correct synergies and the correct matches for them, so that they can graduate successfully. As we move forward, want to talk with you a little bit about our commitments. So our commitments are making sure that we have university-wide readiness programs. We currently have a plethora of programs in which many of our colleges and units are working with CPS students, working with CPS teachers, to help prepare them. This is typically work that's going on. We have some where people come in and read to students in the third grade. We have others that are working from the sixth through 12th grade, just to make sure that there are scaled experiences for the students year over year. We want to make sure, as I mentioned previously, that there is informed access to college, so that the students understand what it takes, what the financial needs will be, what the academic requirements will be, what programs exist, and how that aligns with their interest. We want to make sure that we're increasing the success for students. So it's just one thing to get through the door at UC, but it's another to make sure that they are matriculating successfully. So how do we connect them with key partners, key programs within the institution, to make sure they know where their resources are and who they can rely on to help them navigate their college career? And then lastly, all of this would be for naught if we did not work on college affordability. And so we know that there are many bright, talented, deserving students who are interested in the college education, they just cannot afford it. And so we are working through our public and private partnerships to be able to identify resources, to provide students with either grants and/or scholarships, to be able to attend university with as minimal of a charge or fee as possible. So far, what we've had in terms of investments over the past year, we've invested about $2.9 million for 809 students in just three primary programs. And that's our Cincinnati Pride Grant, for which you may be familiar, students who graduate with at least a 2.2 GPA and are Pell eligible are eligible to receive our Pell Grant. And then we also made some system improvements and enhancements. We created a dashboard. We also created a database and are able now to flag our CPS students, so that we can track them year over the year, to see how they're coming to the university in terms of their academic profile, by college, by race, ethnicity, by gender, by first-generation status, by their performance. But then we're also able to now look at them, trend data, for their retention and their graduation rates. And so that will allow us to have data-driven decisions, so that we can provide different intervention points, or solution points, or additional supports for our students. At your desk, you have a one-pager that also outlines additional commitments that we've made and that we are continuing to make to support our CPS students within the University of Cincinnati. What we know is that we can't do it alone. We have the Cincinnati Public Schools, and we have the University of Cincinnati. And so we're coming together with this particular initiative to really look at problem-solving by creating co-designed solutions and experiences for our students. One example of that was the joining a legacy program this past April, on April 3. This was for admitted students to the university who were CPS students, who had not confirmed their attendance to the university. So our Office of Admissions gave each of the attendees a personalized report to let them know, this is all of the material that you submitted, this is everything that you have to date, these are the things that are still outstanding that you will need to complete your confirmation. How can we assist you to do that today? We're happy to say that of those people who came, we did have individuals confirm on the spot, and then we worked to confirm subsequent students later. This event was also open to parents, as well as CPS counselors and teachers, and so we thank you all for your participation and your support. Another example of our co-partnership is in front of you, and this is the Bearcat Tracker. This is a labor of love, or it was a labor of love. It took about seven months and 60 individuals working together across both CPS and UC to make this happen. This tracker is designed to provide teachers, counselors, students, family, and community members with the steps that are needed to make sure that students are adequately prepared for the college experience. And it starts in the eighth grade, and it's just very simple in terms of just a flip-through so that people can see exactly what they need at each particular grade level. And so this is a resource that we hope will be used. We hope that it will be disseminated community-wide to really help support our students in their higher education pursuits. And then as we move forward, we're thinking about next steps. And so some of the next steps happened about maybe three weeks ago, where we received additional investment into the CPS Strong program. And so with that additional investment, we're going to be able to staff an office. We'll be hiring a director soon, so we hope that if you know anyone who may have an interest to encourage them to apply. We'll be hiring program coordinators, not only on the UC campus, but on the Blue Ash campus. We're also going to be hiring success coaches to support our students through their academic experiences, as well as a part-time social worker, because we know that life gets in the way. And success coaches really are good with the academics, but the other life matters, hmm, we need someone else who may be a little stronger and who may have access to available resources immediately to really be able to work with our students. And we also know that there have been some barriers that our students have experienced, and so we're working to provide investments to reduce those barriers. Those barriers are with regard to emergency relief. Students' cars break down, they don't have the funds to repair them, so we have an emergency relief fund now. The lights may go out, and they have to pay their gas and electric bill. We can assist with that. Okay? So there may be just general life emergencies that come up that could end up knocking a student out of school completely. Our goal is to make sure that our students are retained all the way through graduation. We also know that some students don't have access to technology, and so we now have loner laptops available for students, so that when they have homework assignments and they have to get home, they can take, check a laptop out and take it with them and do their work and bring it back. So whatever barriers that we're seeing or that students are telling us, we're really trying to listen and to really work to eliminate all of the barriers, so that our students can really do their best thinking, do their best work unencumbered. We know that we are looking to develop, and we talked about this, aligning all of our systems. You saw the Bearcat's tracker as a paper document. We're excited to announce that there's going to be an app for that. And so we are working to build the platform out for an app for this. For those who are a little more tech savvy, they can have it in the palm of their hand and know exactly what they need to do, when, at the touch of the screen, or the click of the button, depending on whatever the phone is or the device. And then lastly, really looking to expand our readiness programming and our impact programming. Many of you may be familiar with our UC Scholars Program that started with Hughes-Stem Academy, and it has now expanded and grown to reach mostly all of our CPS schools. So being able to infuse resources into that, as well as our Breakthrough Cincinnati Program, working with students from the ninth grade on to their 12th grade year and graduating them. And so these are just a few of the things that are happening at the University of Cincinnati to support our CPS students, really the pride and joy of our community. And so we are thankful that you are trusting us with your students, that you are sharing the opportunities about the University of Cincinnati with your students. And we just want you to know that we will do our best, but we can only do it together. And so I want to give my hats off to my colleagues for all of the support that they've been giving the students, the university, and the initiative over the year and a half or so, and we really look forward to more excitement coming and supporting our students. We do believe that the best is yet to come. So thank you again for this opportunity to speak with you today.
Thank you.
Are there any questions that we can answer for you?
Do board members have questions or comments? Ms. Bolton?
Thank you. First, a personal privilege, I'd like to thank Dr. Marshall for her wonderful remarks at Marion Spencer's ceremony over the weekend. It was beautifully done, and I know she would deeply appreciate not only what you said, but your leadership that you just demonstrated right here. It's great that her legacy lives on, indeed through you, so appreciate that greatly. Our superintendent did a wonderful job that day, too. So it was a, it was a great day for UC and also a great celebration of a good life. Couple, real quick, I do know that our superintendent was very influenced and influenced our STEP Committee by the first meeting at our strategic plan with the 30 community members. She not only distributed, but as I recall, waived the UC strategic plan. So obviously, you had an impact in what we've produced as well, and I think that's very useful. We have become a PK-16 district, and I want to compliment our people that have built that basically ground up. I had to talk to a person, and they came from Morehead State for our Friday meeting, because they're part of the consortium, and there's just such greater and greater interest in CPS. And it's really good, it's really good to know that our students are going to be getting the support that they need, and it's great that it's happening at the city's university. Most people don't know that most of the history of UC, it was simply that, like in the medieval times, a city university, not a state university. But with that, we've obviously had more opportunity, but they're such a proud tradition, so thank you, and such a connection between CPS. So thanks for reawakening that.
You're welcome.
Yes. Any other comments? I, Mr. Messer?
Yeah, just thank you. There are a few of us, last, maybe it was three years ago, somebody reached out to us, and they were rightfully concerned if their facts were accurate about the amount of diversity at UC. And, you know, it's been in the back of our mind, and, you know, I thought, well, one of these days, I'm going to bump into the president and say, maybe I could buy you a cup of coffee and talk about it. Well, you have solved that, so I can take that out of my to-do list, and I just, I think this is so incredible. And as a first-generation college kid who was trying to figure this out, what a, I was fumbling at the last minute, because there wasn't anybody, even, we didn't have a counselor. So you're trying to figure this out with parents, and this is not good for just the kids. The parents are going to love this. So, and I love the idea of the app, so thank you. I just think it's going to, it's a wonderful partnership that we should be celebrating, UC should be celebrating, because that does nothing but really help our children. Thank you.
Yes. And finally, I just want to add to the comments that have already been made. It was a great presentation, by the way. I loved the presentation. I happen to know several of the young people who have come through the first-gen program, and I can tell you that, nothing but positive comments about it, and their sense that if that program had not been there for them, they would not have made it through. And so I just appreciated hearing more about that and knowing that it's there and that our students have access to those types of programs, and to hear, I'd love to hear more about the data as that starts to, you know, as you start to collect more data, like who these kids are, where they're going. I like the idea of knowing, of tracking them, so that we have a good sense. I'm especially curious, and I don't know whether you know this or not, for all kinds of reasons, but would you happen to be able to track those kids who come through the foster care system, so that if they're CPS graduates coming from foster care and they come to UC, you also are tracking that as part of the data piece?
So we haven't added that to the, move forward, sorry. We haven't yet added that to the dashboard, but it's actually on our list for next. Wonderful. We also lead a HEMI program, which is for kids of age at a foster youth.
Yes, very familiar with HEMI, yes.
As well.
Thank you. Thank you. So, any other comments or questions? Mr. Davis? Mr. Davis?
Carolyn, you, um, made me think of an interesting point around tracking. Uh, Kathy, and I've, Bluzette, I've already tweeted or text your, your husband, so.
Oh, okay.
He's got a nice little picture of you at the podium. Um, but you raised an interesting point for me around tracking. Can we track Gen One CPS by zip code?
We probably can, we currently are not. So we're tracking CPS Gen One students, but we would have that information that we could go back and look at them by zip code.
All right, I'll talk to my new boss over here, Ms. Murphy, and we'll determine when we'll get back to that. We won't, we won't put that on our plate anytime soon. Thank you, but that'd be very interesting for us to know where our Gen One kids are coming from, and then we could pour into those communities to get even more, because I, these numbers are so exciting.
Yes.
And I could see us doubling up. I mean, this is a very exciting presentation, I appreciate it.
Yes, and I know Ms. Bolton has a, a comment, but I want to say, you know, when you ask for questions or comments from this group, you get them. And so, uh, you know, we appreciate hearing all the, the tracking that you're doing and what you're looking at, and so we're eager just to see more, but we know it takes time. So, um, bear with us and, and hopefully with the next report, you'll be able to share some of this kind of data with us, we hope. Ms. Bolton?
Yes, I, I'm just reminded, uh, when you're talking in terms of tracking, I know over the last two years, the, um, uh, what is it called? Cross-Boundary Leadership Team, which is part of our Community Learning Center Network. Uh, a number of the health folks that are involved, uh, have talked about having, having kind of a file that not only goes with regarding a, uh, student's health, but from, you know, elementary to high school, but finding a way or a system to then have it follow them into their post-high school years. So that it's kind of a, it gives everybody a, sort of a head start on what would be there, plus, uh, uh, somebody already knows some things that needed to be known. So I, I'm not sure where they are in the development of that, but I think, again, our focus on the individual student and following them through these PK-16 years, I think that might be something to, to, for further development.
So what I would add to that on the data is we actually have a data dashboard that looks at from 2007 to 2019 with a commitment from the provost to keep it living. So we have a graduate student assigned to it in institutional research.
Great.
We've got a space of readiness, what they come in with. We've got a space of access, the whole application funnel. And then we have a space of success, um, retention, first-year retention, second-year retention, success. It's filterable by, um, Blue Ash, Clifton, whole campus. It's filterable by first generation, it's filterable, uh, by underrepresented minorities, and it's filterable by high school. And so we plan on it being kind of a very living, informing us. Um, we do have an MOU to share data at the aggregate level. This year, we'd really like to lean into an MOU to share data at the student level.
Wonderful. Thank you. Thank you so much for your time and presenting, and, uh, we look forward to seeing you again soon.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you. (applause)
So UC has been a tremendous partner. Um, Josie and Kathy were with us when we started our peer leadership work and have been just an advocate for our kids. And, um, you can see that Dr. Bluzette Marshall is, um, the epitome of a CPS graduates. We're really proud of the work. Thank you so much.
The influencer.
She's an influencer, they're all influencers, that's right, that's right. Thank you all. Thank you. So our next presentation is actually a part of our report out on the strategic plan. So each board member, board meeting, we plan to bring a short presentation on the different com- components of the strategic plan. So tonight, we have our Deputy Superintendent, Tiana Amat, Assistant Superintendent Susan Bunty, and our Chief Information Officer, Sarah Tremble Oliver. You will see that Dr. Uma Katagal's name is mentioned. She is on vacation and was not be able to be here, um, this evening, but she has really been a light and a force to really press this continuous improvement movement that we're on. And so here's our presentation on optimized capabilities.
Good evening, board.
Good evening.
We are so excited to be here with the first presentation around the strategic plan. Um, and we're starting with Goal Four, optimize capabilities, because it is the foundation to, um, moving the strategic plan forward. And I will read directly from the strategic plan here. "We will intentionally design data-informed, customer-focused, and user-friendly processes with profound purpose to create efficient and effective systems." And today, we're going to present the how, and that is through quality improvement. We are embarking on our fifth year with Children's Hospital, um, and have a partnership with them around quality improvement. Um, and it really started with, um, leaders. All of our PLT members are going through very intense training, um, with Children's Hospital. Um, we have a partnership with them, and they are training all of our principals. And we started, um, early on with the K-three literacy work on how to improve, um, reading scores for our very young people. Um, I'm going to briefly go over what, um, quality improvement is. And to sum it up quickly, it's those three questions that we are trying to answer. What are you trying to accomplish? How are you going to measure it? And how, um, what are you trying to change? And before we get, I'm sorry, before we get to that process, um, we realize quickly, we have to establish a culture of improvement. Um, so over the last few years, we have really been working on a relentless drive, a relentless drive to improve. And you do that by bringing people, uh, to the table. Setting up, um, a safe environment that it's okay to take risk. And that when you fail, we fail fast, we learn quickly, and then we, we adjust. The other part of, uh, this work is valuing all members of the team. So all teach, all learn. There are not these levels. A great idea can come from anywhere. So when we're forming these teams, we really try to have diverse representation, um, from different perspectives, different positions. And, um, that truly has, um, yielded some high results that we will share with you later. One of the things, um, that it's very fundamental to QI is huddles. You have to communicate, you have to communicate often. Um, just with our performance leadership team, we meet, uh, twice a week, quickly, early in the morning, so we can make adjustments as information comes in. And lastly, it's data-driven, which, um, is definitely aligned to the strategic plan. What I really like about, um, this work is the adopt, adapt, and abandon. So if something is working, we're going to start off small and test it. And if it's working, let's scale. Um, if it's not, if we can make some tweaks and continue to test and then scale, we'll do that. But the last one, I think, is, um, very simple but hard to do, and that's abandon. Um, we continue to keep things that we know, um, that it, it's not working, but we're comfortable with it, it's familiar. So we are giving people permission to abandon. If your data says this is not working, it's okay. So, um, the process consists of four, um, parts. One is having a global aim. So our global aim is ensuring that our students are influencers of the world. Then having goals with measures, and then drivers. What are the conditions that, um, need to be in place to ensure that, um, change is going to happen? And then at the, um, grassroots level, it's projects. So, um, myself, I will talk about the academic drivers. Susan will talk about SEL, social-emotional learning. And then Sarah Tremble Oliver will talk about, um, the operation piece. So it all works together. So this is an example of a key driver diagram. And it's connected, so that pamphlet that was distributed at all of our launching of the strategic plan has those strategic goals. So for academics, we're saying we're going to increase by ten percent in reading and math, looking specifically at grades three, six, and nine. We are looking at increasing ACT. Um, we're looking at, um, decreasing AP disparities in, um, enrolling more African-American students and multiracial students in our AP courses. Um, and close, continuing to close the achievement gaps. The key drivers were developed not only by central office leadership for the academics, but also principals who went through the training with Children's Hospital. So we all agreed that we have to activate students and families, that they have to be a part of the process. Um, and we're going to put some very, um, specific tests in place around attendance, um, because we can put a lot of interventions in place, but if they are not here, it's useless. Uh, so the next driver was around best instructional practice, safe and healthy culture for learning. And a, a big one is around on gra- grade-level work. And that's really looking at the equity lens, and all research points to, um, remediation is not going to cut it. You have to expose all kids to grade-level, um, content, and really working with our teachers to show them how to get there. And lastly, using data to inform, um, decisions and instruction, and how to use that data. Listed are the, uh, portfolio projects for, um, the curriculum department. We have adopted a new ELA, uh, curriculum, K to twelve. So making sure that, um, our teachers and our principals are supported in this work. Um, we've ran tests for the last two years on, it's called Tier Two Intervention, um, of really what research-based practices work with closing those gaps. Um, this year, we are going to do a math adoption and bringing, um, a variety of stakeholders to the table. So there are several projects there that, um, team members from different departments, representation from our teachers, representation from our administrators will help lead those projects.
Thank you very much. So we're now going to spend some time talking about social-emotional learning. So we recognize that right now we are in a scaling process for SEL. Last year, as you may remember, we participated in three schools with both the PATHS and PAX programs. One is around social skill development and, which is PATHS, which is T, was just THS. And then PAX is a framework for providing classroom management structures. So last year, we piloted and, and tested at Fairview, Anna Mount Erie, and Woodford-Paidé. We saw a forty percent drop in disciplinary infractions and an overall improvement in an increase of instructional time. So that forty percent makes me incredibly nervous, and that's smart aim, but we are going for it as we, I know, I, we're, we're leaning in. So I think that, uh, as we add additional schools, you'll see West High, Spencer, Bon-Till, and Roll Hill are coming on board with us this year, and we're scaling into a total of seven sites. That said, all schools will receive social-emotional support, and we will continue with anti-bullying efforts in those sites, as well as, um, our attendance efforts, as our Deputy Superintendent just, um, mentioned. I had the opportunity of meeting with our school's social workers this afternoon, and they are also receiving training and support around quality improvement this school year so that they too can begin putting together a key driver diagram around attendance. I know we have more time in October to really dig deep into SEL and positive school culture work, but we thought that it was important that UC where we are getting, um, started this school year. And now Sarah's going to take some time to, to walk through our operational key driver diagrams.
So in addition to the, uh, QI work on the academic side, we also have some QI projects underway on the operational side. Um, and what has really been interesting about our partnership with Children's Hospital is that we're both organizations that are about people, about children. So we're not manufacturers that are measuring quality based on the defects in the product that come off of our line. Um, and in the industry of healthcare and with childrens, definitely, they measure quality, um, in terms of patient ex- experience. And so we take that, um, premise as well, and that we are, even on the operational side, we are measuring quality based on student experience and by extension, employee experience, because we believe that employees who are having a good experience at work are creating a better experience for students. So just very quickly, some of the projects that, that are underway, um, and these are all led by, uh, members of the leadership team. Um, it is not all of my work, I am just the one in front of you presenting the update, uh, tonight. So, um, Paul McDoll, um, is leading two QI projects to decrease the time it takes for applicants to, uh, fill out our online application and an increase of, on our substitute teacher fill rate. Um, Jen is leading a QI project on decreasing payroll errors. Um, in ITM, we are, um, running a project to decrease the IT help desk wait time and, uh, increase, uh, teacher technology adoption, which will increase student technology literacy. Dan Hoing is, um, working on a project to decrease the response time to public records requests. Lauren Worley to increase positive public sentiment in the news. And Scott Adams, Lauren Johnson, started a key driver diagram to, uh, work on increasing on-time buses. So those are projects that have already, were, are already underway on the operations side. What we have coming up next, um, is an expansion of, of QI projects into every single department and school. Um, to help build capacity in our organization for QI, uh, we will have additional, additional staff trained in the children's method. And we are creating a new position, a Quality Improvement Manager, uh, and organizing a QI showcase where schools and departments can showcase their QI projects to everyone else, modeled after the Children's Expo, which I got to attend last spring, which you see there. So what we thought we would end with is a few of the celebrations that have already come out of the QI work. Um, so I've already mentioned, we have, um, decreased the wait time for the help desk calling, decreased the wait time for public records requests, and, um, also increased the number of valid records submitted to the state through the EMIS system.
And I'm happy to report, although it will be fish, official September fifteenth, that we had a ten percent increase in our third-grade literacy. that our English language learners exceeded the state target for gaining, um, eh, uh, language proficiency on the state assessments. So really are proud of our students and our, our teachers and sports supporting that work. And we have called out, um, call, uh, closing the achievement gap among our African-American students, Hispanic students, and Caucasian students. And on the report card, it titles, um, AMO, annual measurable objectives. And in the past, we had an F, and this year, we will be at a C. So we are closing those gaps. And that's the end of the day, it's basically the CPS way of how we are going to get the job done. So we thank you for giving us some time to share Goal Four, and we are open to any questions.
Do board members have questions or comments? Mr. Messer?
Yeah, you know, I, I have probably the least amount of educational science, uh, methodology, training, et cetera, just not my forte. But as a parent or taxpayer, or, you know, this is unbelievable information that I think, how, how, how do we get this into the hands of people that this will sink to? There's a huge demographic of our taxpayers who support our levies that this will just reinforce. I mean, we think about forty percent drops and increase in class time, um, lower wait times, which gives people more time back at work, higher validity and records to the state. I mean, all of these things just speak to a well-run machine. I have no frame of reference from any other district, but I just don't imagine that this is standard. Um, so thank you all for this work, and I just wonder how we can leverage some of this in our, our public relations to specific demographics that I think would really, uh, love to hear some of this good work.
Thank you. Mr. Morosky?
Yeah, I just want to echo, uh, Vice President Messer. So those graphs, I would recognize an Anderson Center graph with the green arrows pointing in the proper direction anywhere. Uh, I was having like, like flashbacks. Um, so, well, I may understand what those dots meant as quickly as you went through them, Ms. Tremble Oliver, and I was picking up on them. I would love, um, uh, from this position to even have time to sit down and look at those more closely, not right now, and not even those, but after six months, even a year of this work going on, because those graphs really tell an in-depth story, if you know how to read them. Um, and to Mr. Messer's point then, um, while they And to Mr. Messer's point then, while they can be somewhat wonky and difficult to translate to the sort of English, former English teacher brain, I've just been brainwashed enough to understand them, packaging them up is not that difficult in like a postcard-type thing. Because the fact, I can tell you, having just come back from Massachusetts with those other school board folks from all over the country, this isn't normal. And it's not par for the course. And we are fortunate that, as you all said, to have that partnership with that hospital down the street. So, the fact we're even tracking it, and, you know, people will say what they say, and they do say what they say, "Oh, well, you're the best at being the worst," whatever. We are working our asses off, and we're measuring it, and we're holding ourselves accountable. And we just gave the public a document to hold us accountable with. And so, being able to report some of those out in a high-level manner, I think, is really awesome, and be able to kind of, you know, instill that public trust, some of which has been lost over the year, and it's coming back now. And so, I just, I want to applaud your work. Optimize capabilities. I missed the meeting when we changed it, and I had to ask Lauren Worley, I was like, "Pardon me, what is optimize capability?" She goes, "Better systems." I'm like, "Oh." I like it, though. It's fancy.
They like it better, don't they?
Like us. Thanks.
When it doesn't work, you abandon it. I don't know, there's something about today, I'm feeling things. Okay. Yes, Mr. Davis?
We're well-trained on the AAA. AAA, AAA. We're well-trained. Mr. Messer and Morosky captured the majority of my thoughts. I wanted to ask about a measure that we have. When we say that schools are going to have continuous improvement projects, do we mean they're going to be included in continuous improvement projects? I mean, they don't have to necessarily have a project at the school. Like, take Susan's SLE, it was seven schools that were in her population. That would count for seven schools having a...
Yes, that's one of their projects, yes.
All right, because I was thinking, that was going to be quite ambitious to get to 50% of our schools with individual QI projects. That would be difficult.
Well, they will all have QI projects.
Of their own?
Of their own. Our principal meetings have been restructured. So, in the morning, it is CPS leadership, so it's all of central office administrators and principals coming together. That's where we're going to do the QI showcase, but there are supports. And Children's Hospital will be providing professional development monthly with the principals, and we also have consultants in the schools to support and help with the projects on a daily basis. So, the support will be there.
I absolutely love you all. And the reason, the reason this thing isn't standard is because, and we should be touting this plan as the most ambitious plan, that's incredibly ambitious. And I'm really grateful for your leadership, and those of you up here that are continuing pressing about making this thing real, because when you talk about improving every building, and the administration is busting their butt like they are, I'm not going to cuss like the Catholic guy. The Catholic built, you know, they just cuss on them. You know, as public-built people, we just don't cuss on the floor. When you're busting your butt like this, this is simply incredible. And I agree with you, Mr. Messer. We definitely got to get this out in all hands, because I think we take a lot of crap unnecessarily. And as hard as you guys are working, and I just think this was a very impressive presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. I would just like to add, for those projects, the power of QI is the person who asks the question typically has the answer. So, those projects are at the grassroots, and they're going to determine what they want to push based on their data, and then we're going to support them in the work.
Yep. Ms. Bates, followed by Ms. Bolton.
Yes, and I just want to add, being a longtime policy committee member, that I see some of our policies reflected in these systems changes, or this new focus on optimized capabilities. But I want to let you know too, that if you see ways that we can improve or revise our policies that support this work, please let us know, so that we, you know, at our level, are doing the same kinds of things and thinking the same way to be able to optimize our capabilities.
Thank you. Ms. Bolton?
Yeah, appreciate the report. That's set a good standard for the rest of these that we're going to be hearing throughout this year, so that's great. Just on a language issue, as a person that's a big believer in quality assurance and continuous improvement, one of the things to watch out for is that sometimes continuous improvement sounds incremental, instead of breakthrough. And so, language-wise, and I think you hit this properly, but the word, the culture of excellence piece, which I think is a signature piece of this superintendent, that word excellence has to be there, and I think as well, the particular values that are all part of that. And I would appreciate, make sure that we also, often as we can, use the word innovation. That communicates a bigger concept theory, if you will, than the improvement. But this culture of improvement, continuous improvement, I think it's great, and it is what we have to do. But I really, mostly, especially during this particular superintendency, it is the pursuit of excellence, that is what we're trying to do. So, appreciate this work. And again, I know you all have had a long day today.
A long week.
And it started with a pep rally, so there you are. Thank you very much.
Yeah. Thank you so much for a great presentation. We look forward to more, and we know it's all going to be innovative, and we're ready for it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on, does anyone have any kudos? Kudo man is gone. Mr. Messer?
Yes. You know, I think Friday was a home run, and then today was, what's better than a home run?
Grand slam.
Grand slam. So, thank you very much for that help. So, I just wanted to say thank you. If you didn't leave both of those events and just feel inspired about what's happening here at Cincinnati Public Schools, you were asleep. And you should go to the doctor and get that checked out.
There were four events, back-to-back.
Well, yes, yes. And, you know, and I think it's, our audience today were our teachers. And unsolicited today, I got this note, and it said, "My key takeaways from today, what a positive way to start the year. We thought it was nice to have everyone together. We talked through the whole building today. It was just great to see and hear our administration. We loved hearing talent from around the district, maybe more of that next year. The UC location actually worked out better, because following the event, there were lots of options for lunch." And last but not least, I didn't hear a single negative comment, which as you know, from teachers, that is huge, with capital H, capital U, capital G-E. So, you know, I think that the purpose was to roll out our plan, but also to engage our front lines, and our leadership team put it out. Lauren and her team just moved mountains on both of those events, and we're like, "Oh, it's nothing." But, you know, thank you to the administration and the leadership team for just a really incredible couple of days that have really set us off on fire in the 2020 school year. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Bolton?
Yeah, adding to what I mentioned before regarding Marion Spencer's ceremony, and our superintendent being such a great face for our district, and we also had, I would say, just a few more even greater faces from our district at that ceremony, because the youngsters, the authors, and artists from Winton Hills Academy, I don't know how you steal a show from Otis Moss or our superintendent, but of course, the little ones did, and there wasn't a dry eye in the house after they did a video of their book with their own narration, and it was very, very impressive. So, it's just, again, we're not taking crap from anybody this year. So, that's just the way it is. And that's the movement, just not taking crap, because we're doing a great job, and that's it.
Got, Mr. Morosky, yes, sir?
Not taking any crap. I like it. That's a good, maybe that could be the new, the new tagline. Okay. I want to give a kudo to Ms. Susan Bunty, Assistant Superintendent. I was in Columbus today on behalf of my day job, doing my day job stuff about babies with the governor's people. And unsolicited from the governor's director of Children's Affairs, as they kick off some of their early childhood work. She's like, "I know you're here on this other business, but your district is leading the entire state when it comes to social-emotional, positive behavior sports." My opinion is that. And she's like, "Would you mind if I reached out and put you in touch?" I said, "I got just the right person to put you in touch with." So, I just want you to know, I think that needs to be known, these are powerful people that are paying very close attention, and in the back of my head was Ms. Bolton saying, "The state stole our plan. The state steals our plan."
Thank you. Any other kudos? Alrighty, Ms. Bates, please present our retirements.
Yes, we have one retirement to announce today, and that is Tammy J. McCoy, who's part of our civil service personnel, she was a food service helper, who retired on July the 1st. So, we congratulate Ms. McCoy, and thank her for her service to our children.
Thank you. Okay, we are now at the item on our agenda for hearing the public. Each speaker has three minutes to speak, and Mrs. Wagner will be our timekeeper. When the buzzer goes off, your three minutes are up. Please refrain from discussing any personnel items. When your name is called, please come to the podium to speak. Our first and our only speaker for the night is Marlena Brookfield.
Before I get started, I just want to say, this place should be a lot more full than it is. I don't care if it's an off-off year for the election, this is a large district, this should be more full. Okay, so what I really have to say to you is that I want to express my support of the strategic plan. I was honored to be part of the Strategic Planning and Engagement Committee. I'm really happy to see, like Ozzy said, the ambitious goals that we have, the ambitious measures, because I know that our staff, and especially our students, are capable of setting, or of reaching any bar that we set for them. We just have to give them the right supports. They're capable of anything, as long as we give them the support. To carry off such an ambitious plan, you're going to need a lot of people with just as much ambition to do the work. Well, my sleeves are rolled up, so call me. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so there are no board matters topics for discussion this evening, so we'll move on to our resolutions. Mr. Davis, please present the following resolution for board consideration and recommendation.
A resolution amending board policy 5840, sanction student groups. I present the resolution as written for adoption.
Is there a second? Thank you. Any discussion, comments? Ms. Wagner, please call the roll.
Aye.
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Messer?
Aye.
Mr. Morosky? President Jones? Aye. Thank you. Mr. Davis, please present the next resolution.
A resolution amending board policy 5860, safety patrols. I present the resolution as written for adoption.
Is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Wagner, please call the roll. Mrs. Bates?
Aye.
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Messer?
Aye.
Mr. Morosky?
Yes.
President Jones? Aye. Ms. Bates, please present the next resolution.
Yes, I have a resolution amending board policy 5880, public performance by students. I present this resolution as printed for adoption.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion, comments? Ms. Wagner, please call the roll. Mrs. Bates?
Aye.
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Messer?
Aye.
Mr. Morosky?
Yes.
President Jones? Aye. Ms. Bates, please present the following resolution.
Yes, and I have a resolution amending board policy 5895, student employment. I present this resolution as printed for adoption.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion or comments? Ms. Wagner, please call the roll. Mrs. Bates?
Aye.
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Messer?
Aye.
Mr. Morosky?
Yes.
President Jones? Aye. Thank you. Superintendent Mitchell, do you have a report?
Yes, I do. I have a brief report, starting off with our young people. Okay. So, Gamble-Montessori Elementary, these are some pictures from their cleanup day. We're really excited to open that school next week, along with all of our other schools. So, there's sprucing up the outside, sprucing up the inside, lots of families and staff members there, all joined in the fun. CYC honors CPS graduates. So, every year, CYC, they honor graduates from Cincinnati Public Schools. Students are nominated, and they receive awards based upon their core values that are outlined by CYC, passion, integrity, accountability, empowerment, and community. And then, last but not least, today was so exciting and powerful. So, we had 3,000 teachers. Lee Black, would you stand up? Lee Black. Lee Black represented not only CFT, but he represented the teachers extremely well with his bright, cheerful attitude, very positive, very productive. And can you believe that that man has 20 years' experience in education? I know, I don't buy it either. Yeah, I know. So, we had 3,000 teachers, we had Woodward's marching, no, Withrow's marching band, we had cheerleaders from Withrow, Taft, and Woodward. It was a fun-filled day, it was exciting, the teachers were happy to be there. It was really just a nice way to, quite honestly, have like a homecoming event, and to welcome our new teachers into the fold. It was very exciting. We were happy to have our board president there to give an address, as well as our vice president, Messer, who jumped off of a stage. Yeah, it was exciting. Always enjoy the support of Board Member Bolton. It was just an energized day, and a great kickoff to the school year. So, I do want to thank and just give a shout-out to all of our administrators who came together to make this happen. Each school set in a certain section, its school section, they had a flag with their name, we did a roll call, I mean, it was just, the energy was powerful. So, thank you, Paul McDoll, for giving out the roll call. It was just a very, very exciting address. Our assistant superintendent, deputy superintendent spoke along with Shawna Murphy, our new assistant soup. It was just an all-out team effort. Lauren Worley organized over 30 different organizations there, were to give out information, literature to teachers. It was just exciting. And so, a great, great, great kickoff to the beginning of the school year. So, we're super excited about it, and we can't wait for the kids to come. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Mr. Messer and I were sitting there quietly, talking about our cheerleading days. So, when he jumped off the stage, I mean, that's true, and when he jumped off the stage, I looked at Ms. Bolton and said, "Uh-oh, we heard trouble there." But it was good. It was good.
So, you were supposed to jump off the stage, Madam Chair? Was that a challenge?
Well, that would not have hap, I was first.
I was going to hold her in a torch. Stay tuned for next year.
No, no, no.
Oh, President, I have one other quick thing. I'm so sorry, I forgot, I apologize. But I was sent this picture. So, this is our marquee outside of a College Hill Presbyterian Church, and on it is the city landscape of Cincinnati, and what does it say? Influencer. We are influencing the entire city, we are starting a movement to elevate education in this area, and it's all starting with Cincinnati Public Schools.
Thank you.
University of College Hill.
Okay, before we totally lose it, okay. Do I have a motion to approve the revised recommendations of the superintendent? Some of... Is there a second?
Session.
Any discussion? Ms. Wagner? Ms. Wagner, please call the roll. Mrs. Bates?
Aye.
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Messer?
Aye.
Ms. Morosky?
Yes.
President Jones? Aye. Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the revised report of the treasurer?
So move.
Oh, second.
Second, okay. Any discussion? Ms. Wagner?
I have one part of discussion for the treasurer's report. I just want to thank the treasurer and her department for adding school department responsible. I think that helps.
You didn't think I could do it, did you?
Not over the weekend, that was kinda quick.
That was very good. Thank you for doing that.
You're welcome. Thank you. Ms. Wagner, please call the roll. Mrs. Bates?
Aye.
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Messer?
Aye.
Mr. Morosky?
Yes.
President Jones? Aye. Thank you. Does anyone have any inquiries or updates? Ms. Bates, followed by Mr. Morosky.
Okay, so as you recall, in a recent meeting, we had Mark Jeffries from Go Vibrant share information about an upcoming event we have with P&amp;G. The partners are P&amp;G, Kroger, Landor, the Cincinnati Parks, and Cincinnati Public Schools, and it's Bounce by Go Vibrant, and it's raising money to bring athletics to 16 CPS elementary schools, and these are schools that are low-resource schools. So, you know, there has been an effort to make sure that we bring about equity with this program, so more of our children can participate. And so I wanted to share a quick update on the event, and it has two parts. So the balls are now on sale. You go to govibrant.org, and it's $5.00 pays for one child to be in athletics for one week, and $60.00 pays for a season. And so just kind of take into, you know, account that a latte costs $5.00, so one day go without a latte and buy a ball. The balls will also be on sale the month before Blink in October at area Kroger stores with students from our schools helping to sell them at entrances. So look for our students and support them as they participate in this event. And then finally, the Bounce event itself is going to be part of Blink, and it's going to be on the Great Lawn at Smale Riverfront Park over the weekend of Blink, October 11th through the 13th. And Go Vibrant and CPS will be hosting a field trip of CPS children on Friday, October 11th, at the park, as well as taking them to the Kroger Wellness Your Way event, and there'll be a large interactive display with lights that will also be at the park for families to experience. So, board members and everybody out there, go and buy some balls to support this effort, and to get our kids active earlier, and to give these children and these 16 schools the opportunity to go through, grow and develop through athletics.
Thank you.
We buying some balls tonight, Ms. Bates? I've got it on the phone.
Any other inquiry or update, Mr. Morosky?
First of all, that's gonna be awesome, and thank you for bringing that presentation, Ms. Bates, when Mark came here to present. I've since followed up with him to learn more about that organization. It's really, really awesome. And my mom, and Mr. Messer can attest to this, my mom knows about the buying the balls at Kroger, and now it's gonna be a movement of its own, now that she knows that it's all part of Blink, and that we can, yes, support the students, it's going to be quite a thing. My only update was, I promised Board Member Bolton I would follow up on the early childhood advisory committee piece at our meeting on Wednesday. It's not planning for the next millennium, it's not even planning necessarily for appropriations or a bill, but was mandated by the feds, but the reorg that Governor DeWine has done under Leigh Ann Cornyn's leadership, the way she put it to me today was that the old, and I wanted to do this publicly, 'cause I said I would publicly, that the old ECAC, Early Childhood Advisory Committee, largely became big, huge government agencies that come and give updates, that could often just turn into fights of Ohio JFS, here's what we did, here's what we did. So they mixed up the membership, have the same partners, but then some newer partners at the table, to try to get more aligned on it. If we have kiddos, we have public ed, we have home visiting, we have this, we have healthcare, how can we all align these silos a little better? So fulfilling the federal mandate, but also trying to like maybe get ahead of something for kids, as opposed to just reacting to fill out paperwork. So I don't think it's like necessarily gonna result, and this is what we should do. That's all.
Thank you. Any other inquiries or updates? Letter to City Council went out, so just to let you know, you all should have received the copy. Okay, great. All right, any assignments? Mr. Davis?
I just have one to follow up from Student Achievement Committee, to have Ms. Worley and the attendance campaign work with influencers in our buildings. I don't quite know how we will identify, but my suggestion in student achievement was around student athletes and extracurricular performers that we know are having influence in the building already. But I think that would be great with our attendance campaign. And then additionally, we've been talking about At-Ten Dance for almost a year.
What?
So, copying off the Cleveland Public School, they have a At-Ten AM...
A... Oh, okay.
Dance initiative across the district where at 10:00 AM, everybody dances.
And of course, it spells attendance. Did you get it?
So, attendants, attendants.
Oh!
Woo!
That's why it took a year.
And I don't think this is really an assignment more than it is, can we think about it more?
We're just talking about how it is, Mr....
I don't want to make it formal. Thank you.
Okay, sounds good. That's exciting. Innovative. Okay. Ms. Bolton?
Just, I'll do my usual on the logo for the district. As many times as I possibly can, I would like the public to see the three items, because those three items, academic achievement, personal well-being, and career readiness are really the breakthrough of the strategic plan, because there is not another district in the country that says personal well-being, I am sure, let alone having the academic achievement and the career readiness. That, I think, should also be in part our message as we go out and take to the public regarding our renewal, that those are three focus areas. It's, the three Es are happening, they're getting that, I think that's super. I think this influencer obviously is having some impact, too, but I really think as we even, as we even kind of craft what we say out in public, I think those are the three areas we need to be emphasizing as we try to sell our renewal. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And Mr. Morosky, yes?
One assignment for General Counsel, Mr. Dan Hoing, and Ashley Addo and the whole team. And it's really a question, but I don't need the answer now necessarily, so it came to my attention that in our high schools that have service requirements, that you can get service hours toward your requirement for volunteering at your church, which is great. I found it somewhat interesting that you couldn't get volunteer community hours for volunteering on campaigns that are political in nature. And is that a state? Again, if it's not a state law, is it something we could maybe look at? Because again, I think both are great, but I think allowing one and not the other is potentially problematic, because in my opinion, both teach young people that being involved is important. So to look into whether volunteering on campaigns, there were a number of parents that brought it up to me, and I said I didn't know, so I would pass it along. Cool, thanks.
Thank you. Okay, having no other business before us, I declare the meeting adjourned.
Record tie.
What tie?
I am so proud of you all. I am so proud of you all.